Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and also broadcast live on the town of Pennfield's website, pennfield.org, the town of Pennfield's government access channel 1303, and also on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and it is free. If anybody would like to address the board on any public hearing matter tonight, there's going to be specific opportunity to do that in a couple of ways. One is you're going to be able to come up, if you're in person, to one of these microphones, and give us your name and address and comment on that. Folks also have a chance to call in, 340-8771, with questions and comments, and then also submit electronic comments through that same website, pennfield.org. So you'll see me shifting around here, checking this computer, checking that computer. The most likely reason for me doing that is I'm seeing if there are comments that we need to address. We like to point out every meeting that we think the town does a really good job of making sure people in the town are aware of the application so that they can come in and comment on them. And the town alerts people to this in a number of different ways. One is by sending postcards to people that live close to the application, so they can see something's up and call if they like. They post the agenda, the town that is, posts the agenda on the website, also makes the applicant post the signs on the property, so again, people driving by can call. We think it does a good job of doing that, and we do appreciate everybody coming in with their comments or nowadays calling or electronic submissions. So we'll start our meeting tonight with our work session. We have some typical agenda items to take care of, and then we'll launch into tonight's new public hearings. We'll ask the applicants to come up again to these tables, give us name and address, and then the board member that's been assigned to be a lead board member on a particular application will walk the applicant through. Everybody submitted some pretty detailed written applications, which we've all had the chance to review, and we certainly have some questions, but we just think leading the applicant through the process makes things a lot more efficient and easier for everybody. But having said that, everyone's going to be given a fair chance to let the board know what they think the board should know, both applicants and any commenters that we have. And I think it went out of order a little bit, but I think that covered it pretty much. So having said that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, folks. So let's go to the work session agenda. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the March meeting. I may have a motion on those.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve in a second. I know we had an email today about some draft versus final version. It's not final until we approve them, which is great. So we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have no tabled applications tonight, so we can launch right in to tonight's public hearings. Great work session. I'm exhausted.
Do we have any clarification?
Oh, yes. That's a good, yeah, thank you. Jeez. That's why you sit on my way.
I was going to say, I was just going to say that.
So, yeah, we do like to go through and quickly see if we have, if any board members have questions from, of Andy about tonight's applications, just to try to clarify things. So thank you, Andres, for saying that. So I'll just ask, does anybody have any questions for clarification on number one?
No.
No.
How about number two? Four? And five? Okay, great. Yeah. Kind of forget about that. Thanks for reminding me.
I felt like we were moving too fast.
All right. All right, let's go. Application number one, then.
Alan Neils, 1761 Plank Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code that is taller than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code and larger than the principal structure as required by Section 250-2.2 of the code at 1761 Plank Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Alan and Deborah Neils and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 096.03-1-55.11. This is application number 23Z-0013.
Either one.
Hello. If we could have your names and address for the record, and then Matt will walk you through this one.
Alan Neils, 1761 Plank Road.
Deborah Neils, 1761 Plank Road.
Good evening.
Evening.
So it appears that you're looking for three different variances. The first is regarding a setback of the building. You're looking to build a pole barn, it looks like, right?
Correct.
The second is that you're looking for a variance for the height of the pole barn, and the third is a variance because the pole barn that you're proposing is larger than your residence. Is that?
That's correct.
We're in agreement with those things?
Yes.
Okay. So your property is a little over 26 acres?
Correct.
Okay. And are there other pole barns in the area that are of this size?
Yeah, there's several with a one or two mile radius.
Okay. Did you say several or seven?
Several.
Several.
Several, okay. And so the height, you're looking for it to be 25 feet, three and a half inches tall. Is that?
That's correct.
And code says that, what is it, it's 20 feet by code, right? Right, Andy?
Right.
Why can't you build it at that 20-foot marker?
Well, originally, I had it at 16-foot tall, and it was higher than that. So I lowered it to 14-foot, and I'm keeping the pitch the same as the house, so it all looks, all the structures look the same. When you go that short, it looks squatty, it doesn't blend into the aesthetics of the house.
Okay.
You mean without the roof, so it's...
Yeah, are you talking about the whole, to the peak of the roof? It was 14 feet?
No, the sides are 14 and the peak is 25.
Gotcha. Okay. So with the peak of the roof, why couldn't you drop that down five feet, three and a half inches?
Well, even if you did that height with a 412 pitch, it's still above 20-foot.
So the code says that it's not the walls, it's the entire building. So from the highest point to the ground, can't be more than 20 feet. So my question is, why can't you build it within those parameters?
It just doesn't fit the needs of what we're trying to do.
Okay. Talk to me about that. What are you trying to do with that, that it doesn't fit its...
Well, I want to put a 12-foot-high door in to put equipment in there.
Okay.
Tractors, excavators, boats, stuff that I have laying around the property. The aesthetics of the house is 612 pitch, so I stay with 612 pitch. It just blends in nicely to what we have there.
And when you say 612 pitch, you're talking about angle?
The roof pitch.
Okay. All right, and that's your...
That's the front, yeah, so.
Okay. And it looks like, is that a barn already that you might use as a garage?
Yes, 100-year-old horse barn.
Okay.
Using as a garage.
And that's not sufficient for your needs?
No.
Now, the aerial view suggests there might be a shed back there. Is there a shed back there?
No, it's gone.
Okay. All right. So that's just old?
Wore out its need.
Okay. So I guess I'm getting back, so one of the things that we have to take into account is the variance that we give is the least necessary variance. So I'm still not clear why the storage of all of those things that you talked about, I understand why the footprint would need to be a certain size, but I'm still not clear why the height makes a difference.
Well, the height makes a difference because of the aesthetics of the surrounding buildings. If I shorten that roof up to a 312 pitch, with the winds that we've been having and the storms we're having, my shingles and stuff are, whatever, material I put up there is going to get affected by it.
Okay.
I go in a larger pitch, it keeps the snow load spread out, it matches the house, it just looks better for the area.
And I would note that your neighbors, the church right next door, that they have not had any, in fact, they wrote a letter of recommendation for approval.
Right.
So let's talk about the being larger than the principal building. So you're looking for it to be 138 square feet larger than your house. Can you build it any smaller and still get the need and get the use out of it that you're looking to get?
One of the questions I have is, open porches counted as storage area? That's included in the square footage?
Yes.
So that's what puts us over the edge.
Right. No, no, I'm aware. I'm just asking, can you do without those porches, let's say?
This would just take away the looks we're trying to get for the property.
Okay.
And she used it for gardening and things like that to the side, we could sit out there and enjoy the sunset and other things by sitting under the, out of the weather.
So that, the porch right now that we see on the screen, that are to the sides of it, are those going to face out towards your open?
Towards our yard.
Towards your yard.
The swing set is with our grandkids and stuff.
So I'm going to be honest, for those two variances that you're looking for, and in my head, the fact that you have 26 acres probably helps you, but the setback is the part where I'm sort of having a problem with, because you're looking to have it 60% closer than allowed by code, so you're looking for it to be 20 feet instead of 50 feet from your side setback. And we have over 26 acres of land here to deal with. So why is it that you can't put this in compliance with the code?
Well, there's several reasons. I utilize my existing driveway that's around the barn that's there. It's on the highest ground for, keep it up in the air so drainage.
Okay.
Doesn't affect the environmental impact of the area. If I move it over any further, I'm in my leach lines, and that's, I'm not privileged to have sewers out there yet, so the leach lines are kind of critical for us.
So it looks like the west of your property, there's a, it looks like it could be a gravel driveway, or it could be a driveway, the arrow's going up.
That's a service road for farm equipment to get back.
Okay. Is that, and you own that?
Yes.
When you say it's a service road, is that something, is there, I mean, it looks like it's wooded, where...
Well, there's a hay field back there, a cornfield back there, so...
Is there really? Wow.
So the hay field's there, the cleared area, and then way in the back's a cornfield.
And is that something you do yourself, or do you lease that out?
I do it myself.
Okay. So why couldn't you utilize that driveway and still have it be 50 feet from the property line?
Well, the other reason for putting in that location is because utilities. I have no service out back there for electric, water, gas.
Could you, can you run it?
Yeah, at an expense that I really can't afford.
So you're looking to put electric and water and gas out there?
Mm-hmm.
Why do you need those things?
Well, I'm going to put in a boiler.
Okay.
Heated floors, so I don't have to lay on the floor to clean my lawnmower deck, maybe I can have a little comfort. Water supplies the boiler, so that's the only purpose of the water, and then the electric. I need 100 amp service out there.
And I'm sorry, you can't run it out there from, if it were in that location on the west side of the property?
All those utilities has to be tapped into the street and brought out.
No, I'm asking if it's possible. I'm not asking the process.
It is possible, correct, but it just doesn't suit our needs, getting up in age to walk 200 yards out to the yard to go out there and use it.
And I hear you. One of the things I'm wrestling with is, so these variances, they go with the land. So when you sell the property and you're no longer there, the variance still exists. And so the next homeowner, who could be 19-years-old, could purchase it, and we'd be still looking at the same setback. And if this were a one-acre property, and you were looking for 20 feet versus 50 feet, then I think I would be looking at this differently than a 26-acre property, and you're looking for the setback.
The other reason is, is if down the road we subdivide, I've got three daughters, and if they want a piece of the property, that barn would fit on the footprint of your two-acre minimum of subdivision. So that barn would go with the house. The other land could go, whatever, the children want to build their own house.
Do you have plans to subdivide right now?
Not in the next 20 years.
Okay.
Not for my use.
Can you just, on here, show me exactly your proposed, like, with your arrow, Andy? Can you just, where, did they want it? Right there?
It's right about here, is that right?
And then, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow you, Matt, you're suggesting, like, exactly on the opposite side?
Well, they said that has to be, they need the variance putting it there because of leach fields, which I understand.
Right.
But that might take up, let's say, an acre of their 26-acre property, that leach field, so they still have, and they also mentioned, one of the reasons putting there is that access to their driveway. So if they moved it to the west side, then they could build it within code without needing a variance for the setback. They can still utilize that driveway, and it would be nowhere near the leach field.
And where do the leach fields end?
Directly behind the house.
Over to, like, where that swing set?
There's a swing set there, and then straight back from there. There's 400 foot of leach.
Yep.
Okay.
With a 2,000-gallon tank, 20-foot off the foundation of the house. But the utilities is a major cost, and then for us to access it out there in the wintertime. Go right from our house, I plow the driveways, I can walk right out on gravel right to the barn, versus I wouldn't be able to do it, I don't plow that utility road in the winter.
Could you?
At another expense, and it just doesn't fit what our habits are right now.
What would the cost of running utilities if it were on, let's say, the west side, if the pole barn was on the west side of your property?
Probably a minimum of 5,000 per discipline. You're talking three, you're talking probably $20,000.
What about on the other side? Where you want it?
Where I'm proposing to put it, or request. Just, I'm going to put them in, so it's just a minimum cost of materials.
You're running it off the one that already is existing in the house, in other words, versus having to have new service from the road to run to that net new building on the west side? Okay.
That's correct.
I understand the cost difference. So how big is that structure that's right over the fence?
Right over.
Right over the property line, there's a structure that's right, that seems to be, if you move to...
Where the arrow is?
Yes.
That's the church, right?
That's the church's garage.
So how big is the church's garage? And is that currently, is that currently the code, Andy? And did we have to provide an exception for them to put that in?
I don't believe any variances were issued for that. I'm assuming there...
Well, I'm surprised it's as close as it is to the property line that there wouldn't be a variance.
Yeah, it was built, the church was built in, like, 18...
Well, where I'm going with that, Matt, is that building is very close in size to what they're proposing, and so they're not, and again, they're not proposing something that isn't already, you know, within, so the question is, is that...
I personally don't have an issue with the size or the height of this, but I still have concerns about the setback.
So let me ask you this, in trying to come to the middle ground there, how far over can you move it without, you know, to bring it more in compliance, without killing yourselves financially? Five feet, eight feet?
Well, originally...
It's a significant variance, there's no question about that.
Right.
So how far can you move it to try to bring it closer to the setback rule?
Originally, I was on the assumption it was a 10-foot variance.
Okay.
Because of the square footage, I found out that it's a 50.
Right.
My mistake. I brought in 400 ton of stone. I started prepping the site, started doing the environmental impact, the drainage and everything around the site, and then I met Andy.
Okay.
As we call him sometimes, you met the Grim Reaper.
No, he was very, very professional, and he represented the town very well.
Yeah.
He was very helpful. He helped out tremendous. So I measured it out, and originally I had, like, 25, and I still can't stay on off the wetland, or off the wet part of the property. 20-foot puts me exactly where the stone is and where the water and leach lines begin. That's why I can't adjust it, or I'd be in more trouble.
That structure, so that building is currently, you said, was past its prime, and you demolished it, that one, right?
Yes, that, that's...
And how far, is that basically the start of the new building? Is that where you're going to put the new building?
No, that's probably another 10-foot over. It's in line with my front barn, if you see the barn in front.
There's a site plan he can bring up, there you go.
So there's the new building?
So it'd be in line with the front building.
Hey, Andy, that, the current barn...
That's not 50 feet.
Yeah, I was going to say, how far is that from the property line?
20 feet.
Because it's in line.
Okay. I mean, I...
It's going to be in line with that.
My thought process a little bit.
Yeah, the other thing which sometimes occurs with setback variances, if you can go back to the Google, Andy, I don't know that it would be any help here at all, but a lot of times, we ask people to provide buffer. But would you be buffering a church? A big, you know, a big church that is...
If you see those lines of trees that are there now?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Because the property line, that house is six-foot off the property line.
Right.
So that buffer was put in for our privacy over 20 years.
Yeah.
Those trees, about $40 a pop, there's probably 60 of them there. So it took a long time to get the buffer from the house, and beyond that, it's just open space.
Your daughters used to ride my school bus, and I very much remember.
You also said something in your letter about the, let's see, the location of the barn will help block the view of the parking lot of the church with no obstruction of view for the church.
Yeah.
Which sounds like it's a good thing in support of your variance request, but could you expand on that a little bit?
Well, if we were having, on our privacy, and there was a church event going on.
Oh, all right.
With all the traffic, and the cars, and the chaos over there, you don't have privacy in your backyard.
Yep. I got you now. I understand that. All right.
I'm good. I don't...
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, let me check the emails. I see nothing, I see no phone calls. I'll invite anyone in the audience that cares to speak about this to come on up. All right. Then again, 340-8771 for future applications. Feel free to call if you like, but let's go ahead and proceed with the, we'll start with the seeker analysis.
Make a motion to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Matt, second by Andres, under seeker. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits?
All right. So for all three variances being sought, being the setback, the height of the pole barn, and also the fact that it's 138 square feet larger than the principal residence, I would move to approve those variances, especially for the area, the size of the building, and also the height of it, the fact that it sits on 26 acres of land, those two really, it's, and it's in East Pennfield, that those things don't, I don't find too much of an issue with them. The setback, I made my concerns known, but the reality is, is that the current barn, or horse barn, or carriage house, or whatever you want to call it, is sitting at about the exact same distance from that east property line, and so it's not really going to change the character or have any real issues. It's going to be exactly the same.
Yeah.
I don't see a difference between that current barn and what's being proposed.
Right.
Certainly, it's self-created, but it's not, I don't have too much of an issue with that. Everything is, I think, substantial, but I think, based upon the explanations by the applicant, I think it's appropriate to approve these.
Yep. I agree with the comments, except I'm not so sure that the size compared to the house is all that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah, 138 square feet.
But certainly, the setback variance, the one you focused on, is substantial, but you look at that Google map there, there's a lot of stuff there.
Yeah.
And this will add to it, but it's a nice property, the neighbor most affected, as I already said, we're okay with it, and I know that 30, 40 years from now, this building may still be standing, we might have different folks in both properties, but those folks will come in seeing this building there, so with their eyes wide open, so to speak. But in any event, good work, good work by you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve all the variance requests, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
I think the one thing to note, too, is the proximity, how close the neighboring, you know, the adjacent property, those homes are quite close as well, and that back garage is no different in distance than this one will be as well.
I would add, if you drive around the neighborhood, you will see a significant number of buildings that are above what we would call the normal, yeah. There's a lot of pole barns out there.
A lot of them.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Nice to see you, Laura. You too.
Amy Catalano, Vital Signs, 764 Ridge Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Simply Crepes, requests approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow an existing freestanding sign with less setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 1229 Bay Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by KPH Holdings Webster LLC and is zoned LB, SBL number 093.11-1-39. This is application number 23Z-0017.
My name is Amy Catalano with Vital Signs, and I'm here about, Andy said, the setback for the sign at Simply Crepes.
Hi, Amy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So it looks like this building was built, you have the sign there, the sign is a little different than what you originally were requesting when you guys were here, when you were getting the variances in the first place. If you can just walk me through what happened?
So we never applied for a variance for the sign. So what happened was, so this sign doesn't look exactly like that. It looks, it's got a black face as opposed to the copper, so they did a change kind of last minute. The building was in the process of being built, and they were digging up areas for gardens, and the patio was coming in, so we, our installer was on site with the builder and the owners, and the sign kept getting pushed closer to the road, you know, little by little, on the other side. So it was kind of, and it wasn't an intentional, we weren't trying to pull a fast one or anything, it just kind of happened.
Mm-hmm.
So now, and I think we're a good nine feet closer to the road than we're supposed to be.
So could you push it back?
It's in the ground with cement, you know, with concrete. Could we? Yes, we'd rather not, because then it's really, really getting close to where they have their gardens and patio.
You mean the front part of the building?
Front part of the store.
Was that added on afterwards, or it just wasn't, it was an afterthought about how the sign would be placed?
It was in the plans, it wasn't there yet. When we were, yeah, so I don't even think, I don't even know if they had the framing up yet for the patio when we put that in. Was that soon after we installed the sign, that picture?
I'm not sure when.
I'm not sure.
July 22.
Yeah, so it probably, maybe that structure was there, I don't really know, for the patio. But yes, we, they, you know, we're going to be planting gardens there in front of the patio, so we ended up installing a little closer to the road. patio, so we ended up installing a little closer to the road. But it seemed in line with, is it Stein...
Stein Miller?
Stein Miller, yeah. Their sign is pretty close to the road, yeah. So I think we're not quite that close.
And the apartment complex, too, if you can go to the...
The Eastway, the Eastway Manor also seems to be in line there. Yeah, I mean, I think that the setback, my, my take is the setback is a little bit more significant, but it is in character and consistent with, you mentioned the two other signs that I had noted as well. I didn't really have any other questions. Did you guys have anything?
Anybody from the board have any other questions about it?
Will the sign be illuminated? Will it shine into the street or at all?
It's not illuminated.
This is the sign, right, what we're looking at?
The post, yeah.
The posts have been cemented in and...
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I don't see any phone calls. I don't see any electronic submissions. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? No?
I'm good.
I would only say, you've been here before, you know, with business and stuff, just make sure folks know that if they're gonna start moving things, give him a call.
Yes.
I don't think there's any, you know, any intent to deceive or anything along those lines. It's a nice, by the way, I live not far from there. Every time I drive by, the place is packed, so.
It's a beautiful building.
Yeah.
They did a really nice job.
Inside and out, yeah.
Yeah, so, so well done in that regard. But okay, let's go right into the seeker on this.
I would make a motion that this is a unlisted action pursuant to seeker.
Okay, and you're also, your motion includes a declaration, or a negative declaration as well.
Negde...
All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion on seeker?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and on the merits?
Yeah, I think that it's consistent with what is happening with the other businesses in the area. You know, it's, while a little bit of a larger setback, again, consistent with what is going on in the neighborhood with the two other businesses in concert near there. It is ultimately self-created, you admit that, but it's, it's consistent. So I would make a motion to approve.
I would, I'll second that as well, and I will add that there are no indication whatsoever that there's any traffic issues or safety issues with cars. But I do have a question out of curiosity. Why did you put the sign that way, as opposed to...
Yeah, it's a single-sided sign. They wanted it just facing the road. I think Wegmans is right across the street. I think that was their logic.
Ah, smart.
Because you have the one on the building that's facing the opposite way.
Yep.
Right.
So what's, I didn't walk and look at the back of it. What's on the back? A comeback again or something?
Uh, there's nothing on the back. It's just black.
Yep, all right. Okay, well...
Good question.
Satisfied my curiosity, I guess. All right, so we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, too.
All righty, moving right along.
Thomas Ledkey, 28 Ewald Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. On behalf of Penfield Trailer Court Incorporated, requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow a larger accessory storage shed than permitted, under section 250-5.11-F3B of the code, at 28 Ewald Drive. Property is currently or formerly owned by Penfield Trailer Court Incorporated and is zoned MHP, SBL number 138.10-2-3. This is application number 23Z-0018.
All right, we may have your names and address, and then George will walk you through.
Thomas Ledkey, 28 Ewald Drive.
Thank you.
Great, well, so, for clarification, you are looking to get permission for a shed that is 20 square feet larger than allowable?
Correct.
By the code, and that, it was, this is a, this is a shed that's already in place?
Unfortunately, yes. I did not realize I needed a permit for a shed until I got the letter in the mail.
Gotcha. So tell me a little bit about, so I know you had a patio installed, and at that time, you, you installed the shed?
Very shortly after that, correct, yes. Probably within about three weeks of that concrete pad being done on the deck on the side.
Gotcha. And was that, and what were you currently using the shed for?
Everything.
I store all my lawn, you know, my lawnmower in there, my weed whacker, leaf blower, snow blower.
All the Christmas decorations.
Some decorations that we use for holidays. We put them in bins and put them out there. Any, I do a lot of woodwork stuff, so I store some wood stuff out there. They're just stuff that I really don't want to have inside the home.
Gotcha. And I see that you did get permission from the, the property owner for the, they didn't have a problem with the shed?
Correct. It's probably the nicest shed on the whole property.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to take a look at it from, in person, but it does look from, from the photographs. Have you spoken to the neighbors on either side? Were there any issues from the neighbors as far as...
So I only have a neighbor on one side of me, and she's had no issue with it. I don't have a neighbor on the other side. They just put another home in there that's nobody's living in yet.
Gotcha. So, you know, obviously this was a self-made issue. In this case, I mean, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions there. Is, would it be possible for you to downsize the shed?
If you want stuff sitting out in the yard and people seeing it all, I don't want to have a Sanford and Son yard.
Gotcha.
And you'd have to buy, you'd have to buy a new shed, right?
That was a great show.
It was a great show, but I don't want it in my yard. I want it nice and tidy.
Yeah, if you start cutting the bathtubs in half, we're gonna have to have another conversation.
Yeah, right.[1001.82][1001.82](laughter)
So, okay, I don't really have any other questions. It's obviously the, the shed was installed in good faith, and you didn't realize that you needed to, or you didn't realize that you needed a permit or that it was oversized.
Combination of both.
Yeah. So I, at this point, and as long as the neighbors don't have an issue with the property, or doesn't have an issue, and it doesn't seem to be terribly out of character for the property, I, I don't have any further questions, unless somebody else on the board does.
No, I don't see any phone call-ins or emails as well, so no further questions. Did I miss anything? No questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Tony? Care? You don't? Well, okay. All right, let's go to the considerations. Start with the environmental.
Yeah, for a seeker, I'd say this is type 2, requiring no further action.
Second.
All right, a motion under seeker by George, excuse me, second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the merits?
Yeah, so, so this was, this was, this was an honest, I think, in this case, mistake. I think if, if they had known upfront that they needed to be slightly smaller for the shed to fit, they would have attempted to perhaps get maybe a slightly taller shed to get the same square storage. But I don't see any issues as to, as to approving this variance at this time. So I would, I would recommend approval.
Second.
All right, motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Kind of just a preview of next month, right?
Yeah.
Just like that.
You got a shed, you got a shed.
All right, number four.
Greg Grillo, Flower City Arcade, 1676 Penfield Road, Rochester, New York, 14625. Requests approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.6-C1C of the code, to allow an expansion of an existing arcade and, and area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code, to allow an existing building and proposed addition with less setbacks than required under section 250-5.6-D3 of the code, with less parking than required under section 250-7.7-D of the code, at 1676 Penfield Road. Properties currently are formerly owned by Nicholas Agnello and is zoned LB, SBL number 139.05-1-56. This is application number 23Z-0019.
Hi. Hello. This hasn't been built yet.
Very good, you're paying attention. Okay, so if we can have your names and address, and then Andres will, will walk you through it.
I'm Greg Grillo, live at 231 Bayway Drive, Webster, New York.
Nicholas Agnello, I'm at 36 Wendell Park in the city of Rochester.
Thanks, guys. So it looks like we've got a whole bunch of things that we're asking for tonight. We're gonna, one, clear up an old setback variance, I think from prior, because I believe the, way back, I don't know what the date was, but in the 80s, I think, there was a setback variance for the existing structure in the back. And I think we moved, looks like by a little bit from what was approved. So we're gonna have to clear that one up tonight. And then we're looking at a variance for a proposed addition to the side of your, to the side of the building for the rear structure. There's a variance for that that's gonna be similar distance from the back. And I guess one question I have from that is, when you place that, how did you decide how close to the back, and why not go farther forward to the, to the street side with that structure that you want to propose put on there?
Initially, actually, I wanted to line up with the back of the building. At first, we weren't going to knock down the garages as part of our proposition here. But now you can see that the garage is no longer in the site plan. So I wouldn't be opposed at all to, to having the whole back of the building flush.
Okay. Because I mean, by doing that, one, you're bringing, I guess, more in compliance with what you're asking to do, but it also then, you know, it just, you know, I guess in a sense, it's bringing it more in compliance, where we're always looking for, what's the minimum you can do that we can grant to still make it work. But since you're looking to take down the garage, I think that would, that would alleviate that problem, where you could bring it forward, as long as, I guess, your architectural and, you know, the design drawings are gonna work to allow it to come forward. So I want to make sure that was still something that would work.
Yeah.
I wouldn't see that being a problem at all. I mean, I have no issue, and I don't think the architect would have any issue pushing it forward a little bit.
I might have an issue with it, though. I'm looking at the site plan right now. And with the parking, the modified parking situation that we have, I, I could see pushing the building forward a little bit, maybe up to that parking lot line, but that, I don't know if that's something that would be optimal in terms of, I don't want to scrunch the parking, the additional parking lot configuration there. I think we have just enough for cars to back out and pull out, pull in, that sort of thing.
How much would you be gaining from that move?
It's a couple of feet. I think it was, it was less than, I think it was less than two feet difference between the existing line and how much that stepped back, I believe. It didn't look like it was much more than that.
If it's just a matter of a couple of feet, you could probably do it.
Yeah, because if you look at the corner of, of the proposed, it's 2.4 feet from the rear property lines. It's like, it's about the distance. It also comes off the back of the building.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. I mean, we could bring, if you look at the front facade line of the addition, we'd maybe ideally bring it up to be flush with the other section. I mean, I guess that's kind of what we were shooting for initially. As long as it doesn't change the configuration of the parking lot, I would have to say.
Sure. And then it looks like we're also looking at a setback variance from the west side. Tell me about the design, and I guess, why you decided to go that far, and why it couldn't be less?
So I, I like to maximize the amount of arcade games and customers that I can fit into the facility. And with the floor plan that I have created, and the equipment that I already have, that would fit all of the equipment I currently have, and, and I think leave enough room for, for guests to enjoy the space.
Sure, sure. And is there potential, so let's say you, this addition didn't happen, would you be looking for locations in other areas at some points, potentially?
I would say so.
Okay.
The business has grown to a point where I think this would be sufficient for it. But I'm not a multimillion dollar corporation either. It's, it's still...
Not yet.
It's me.
Not yet. Okay. And then, there's also, what do I see here? Parking was one thing that I saw a note about here. And that's one question, I guess, I should ask, this before with Andy. There was a noting here that the fire marshal could reduce the occupancy of this building. What, I guess, is there any headway on that, or is that something that was just a hypothetical in your notes, or?
No, I actually talked to him about that, and he said that he would be willing to do that.
Okay. And so, are you guys aware of what Andy's, of what we're talking about here in terms of the occupancy? So you're required to have X number of parking spots per square footage of your property. So with a business, you know, if this large, I think you need to have...
140.
It was something astronomically large. You're basically required to have 140 parking spots based on the size of that building in back that would be proposed, the overall square footage. What can happen is the fire marshal could say, I can, he can lower the official occupancy of that building to, let's say, 60, or whatever it is that works for the parking, and then you could have no more than that many people in there, but it will also limit the amount of parking that you're required to have. Because currently, you just can't fit the parking on that parcel, and you would need to have some kind of agreement with your next door neighbor possibly to use some of that parking lot behind you, or anything like that. Have you guys spoken with the neighbor, or the property owner from, from Speedy's Plaza?
He stopped by a couple days ago at the arcade, and we discussed that potential lease agreement.
Okay.
It's actually already been discussed with a lawyer of ours.
Okay.
If they, if they reduce the occupancy, and then he has that lease agreement later, can he have the fire marshal change the occupancy?
I guess occupancy can always change with the fire marshal.
Yeah, the, the building, by code, the building, the arcade can hold 140 people per the...
Per the square footage calculation.
Per the formula in the building code.
What, reasonably, how many people would fit in there at one time, once this addition is, is built?
Well, I definitely don't see 140 people showing up at the same time.
All driving themselves.
Right, right. That's a good point, too. It's, it's usually families that I see, a lot of families that come to the arcade. So people, I've seen 10 people come out of one car before.
Wow. So how many people would you say would be...
It was at a circus.
At a max, at your maximum time.
It was a Prius, too.
So, I mean, I've seen 35 people now, so I want to say at least by doubling the size of the building, maybe a little bit more, I'd say between 70 to 80 people at one time, possibly.
Like, at the absolute height would be, that would be the most? It's 40 space, like, I don't know, that's the way I think about it.
So it sounds like some level of agreement would be needed, then, with the neighboring, neighboring, in order to get, otherwise, it's gonna be limited. You said 60, Andy?
I think 60 is what you initially proposed in your letters in time.
Right.
And the fire marshal was willing to reduce the occupancy to 60, and how many parking spaces would be required for 60?
That will bring it down to a requirement for 61 parking spaces for the entire property. So that includes the arcade, the house, hence the agreement for the rear of the property. That's why it's almost a requirement.
How many parking spots are there on there now?
Like 12?
20. Oh, now, 12, I think.
So you're gonna take up more room with the more building, and then still need...
Yeah, we're trying to maximize it, and keeping in mind the, the green space formula that we need to have, I guess it's a 35-65 deal.
Yeah, so I'd almost say, I would say that this approval would be contingent on an agreement with a adjoining property.
Absolutely.
For parking, otherwise, I don't know how you're gonna make it work, because even if you scale it down to 60, you know, to 60, you still can't get enough parking spaces.
Well, the problem is, that's correct, but the problem that I have, maybe we have all, is that I don't think we, we don't know the target number.
Right, I was about to say, because we just, you know, like, in our notes, we had 60, because I think that's what you initially said. But now we're looking at 78. I guess, you really need to say, this is how many people I'm looking for, and then based on that, then we say, this is how many spots you need. And then that's what your parking agreement also has to have, because if Speedy's Plaza can't provide you, let's say you need 40 or 50 spots, and they're only willing to provide you 20, that's where you gotta work through those, those steps that we need to know, then what are those numbers? Because I guess the things we like, you know, zoning, we are really fixed, you know, fixed numbers, fixed this. We need to know those exact numbers, then we can provide the relief for those variances.
Yep.
So right now, we have 18, potentially from Speedy. You can see it on the site plan. I guess, the idea of doing this, just using the entity of, of our properties, you're saying that's, that's not even an option here. that's not even an option here, but...
It would be a massive variance.
Like, a massive what?
A variance. Variance from the number, yeah, large, I should say.
Astronomical.
With, with the additional 18, with the additional 18 spots that we've been assured, if, if we need them.
So that gets you, that would get you at about 30?
Yeah, I mean, we, Greg has reflected on this. With, with 35, 40 people, we've been able to accommodate the patrons, you know, sufficiently, I would say.
Just from using the parking on the property now that we have.
Right.
But it's the...
So if it's doubled...
The requirement, though, is 60.
Right.
And if you only have 30, that's a 50% variance, which is a very large...
Okay, I gotcha.
Request. And I get it, that the clown car shows up and 10 people come out.
It's probably common, because you have kids coming from Arty's and things like that.
Yep.
Let me ask you, you discussed a lease with, with the Speedy Plaza.
Yes.
What are the, what are the terms of that lease? Because when I hear lease, I hear a fixed period of time. And if it's, let's say, a year that you can use 20 parking spaces...
Right. That's what, that's exactly what it is right now.
Just for a year?
I could probably talk, talk to him and see if we could push that, you know, extend that beyond that. Because initially, we did talk about a longer period of time. We were hoping for an easement, but that's not something that I think he wants to do. And I don't want to push him too hard. He really wants to help us.
Yeah.
You know, he's...
Well, and honestly, so do we.
Yeah, no, I do. I understand.
I think it's a good thing that you're back here.
Yeah.
Trying to expand.
And we're happy about meeting the movers and shakers of the area, and, and he is definitely one of them. I just don't want to hit him with too many requests. I, I was grateful that he was willing to, you know, go along with, with that. And we had the site plan people come down and, and take their measurements. And if we could get more parking, we, we will. We could try. But I'd like to see if we could work with what we've got right now.
Yeah.
And a longer, maybe, possibly a longer period of time.
Understand that. And that's why I think, at least I go back to, okay, well, what is, what's the need?
Right.
Yeah. What, how many people do you, you know, want in that building reasonably? And what will the fire marshal say? And, and those two...
Right.
Then translate to, well, how many spots by code then will you need?
Right.
Which then will translate into how big of a variance.
Yeah. And, and of course, we wouldn't want to see people having difficulty figuring out where to park their vehicles to come in and enjoy the, the space. So, you know...
I'll tell you, one of the, the first things that will result in that lease being torn up is if people are parking in spots that he hasn't given you permission to use. Oh, I've been on his board a long time.
Right.
And the people towed cars, I'm talking about at the Four Corners. Before the town put all that public parking there, some of you guys probably weren't even born. But there were people parking to go and patronize all the places, and, and property owners had vehicles towed. People came out from eating dinner, and their car was gone.
Yeah.
We can't have that.
Right. No, I understand. And, and we just have to convince Dave Speedy not to sell the Plaza, because we're pretty sure that, you know, we'd be able to perpetually work with him on this.
But that's, that's one of the issues we have, that if he sells it, and the, the new owner doesn't want to give you parking spots and doesn't want to renew the lease, then you're left without parking.
Right.
What's that, I, I have this memory of the first time that you were here, of discussing that, that back parking lot. And I believe parking came up the first time you were here.
That's all Speedy.
Yeah. We, we would like to procure that back parking lot. When I first looked at the property, I had an informal conversation with Dave, and he offered it up to sell hypothetically. And I, I said, yeah, we'd love to. I just can't do it right now. But that is something that ideally is, he'll be able to do technically. I don't know if he could subdivide that or whatever the term is. But we would like to acquire that at some point. So, but since there was a hypothetical, I didn't want to, like, even bring that up right now, because I know you're, we're looking at, you know, black and white situation here. But that is something that we, we definitely want.
Where, where are the spots that he would lease you now?
Adjacent, we, with this, if you could show up the site plan, we've, yeah, we've delineated the, on the east side of...
Right.
On the west side of his property, on the east to us.
So I, I would think...
I actually thought it would have been the ones in back.
Right. I would think that those spots are more likely to be used by the Plaza patrons.
Right. He's utilizing that property for, that back for something right now.
He is? Okay.
But that is an option. And that is something I can, you know...
And there, there, if those spots aren't used as parking spots, and he doesn't have it, that might be something where you can get a longer term lease. I don't, there looks like a lot of spots there. If you just kind of keep the line going straight.
Is that open, too? Is, I mean, or am I crawling through trees to get to your, in the back there? Is that open? Or do I have to, like...
1.2 feet away.
It's, it's part of the arcade experience.
I just want to know what...
No, you're, that's a good point. You have to make a walkway or something, for sure.
Okay. And you're going in through the back, so there's no entrance there, just something to think about, too.
So for the time being, I, I would prefer to just try to take him up on, on what we're looking at initially. And maybe down the road, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, see difficulty maybe acquiring additional parking, but I don't want to promise that now.
No, I, I certainly understand all the, all the issues you have, and I hope you understand the issues that we have as well. And I, really, I think that's probably the only issue with this.
We did meet with the lawyer. Yeah, I know. The parking situation is really...
What happened with planning board, by the way? They got tabled again?
That got tabled. They're kind of waiting to see how zoning worked.
Okay. I see how that's gonna play out.
Yeah.
I, I really think that we need more answers on...
Yeah.
I mean, for me, the, I mean, the parking is really the major one. The, the other ones that I don't necessarily see as a, as a big issue in terms of what the site has and what it can offer and what's already there. But I think we do need some more clarification on, you know, from you guys in terms of parking and what you can get. And then we can kind of work, work from there.
Okay. So what we have is an agreement. In fact, the attorney called the other day and wanted to know if he wanted me to, if he, if I wanted him, if we wanted him to write up the lease agreement. It's all, we're all squared away. I, you know, as soon as I can, I'm gonna call him and if I, if it's doable, and say, go ahead. And we had it set for one year, as of, per the conversation that Greg had with Dave, one year, 18 spots. So that, that is definitive, as we speak now. That's what we have right now. The 20 on, on the, on the site, plus the 18, which gives us what?
That'd be 38.
38. Sorry. And so we have 38 spots that we can...
Right. So, so let's say, okay, you got 38 spots for one year.
One year, right.
Which gives us a little, like, oof, okay?
Okay.
So that's issue one, the length of that. And then, well, 38 compared to how many do you need? By code. Right now, what is that number?
160?
120.
So... 123?
It's 123 without the fire marshal doing anything.
Yeah. If the occupancy is reduced to 60, that would, that would lead to a requirement for 61 spaces. Now, the board also has, in the, in the case of a shared parking situation, the board can, has the authority to further reduce it by, I believe, 20%. They can reduce the required parking number 20% more.
So whatever the, the marshal says, this board can say 20% less, and that's...
Well...
Well, I mean, the fire marshal's only determining what the occupancy of the building is. Then, then the code tells you how many parking spaces you need based on that occupancy number.
Theoretically, everybody could walk there.
Right. What would be the criteria for him wanting to reduce the, I mean, what would he have to, what would he see to, to prompt him to do that? I'm just curious.
The, the sign inside says occupancy 61. And then you can't have anyone in there over that, or you're breaking the rules for fire code.
If you break...
So that helps you, reducing the occupancy helps you on the parking spot issue. But do you want to limit yourself with the number of people there? Would you rather have 100 people than 61 from a business standpoint? Well, probably the answer is yes. But where the hell, where the heck are they gonna park? Right?
60 is better than zero, so.
Right. I was just gonna say.
Well, that's what you have to think about. That's, and, and I do, I, it looks like we're gonna table this one as well. I know you're anxious to move, move along. But I don't think we have enough information. And, and again, I'll just say, we want to help you. It's admirable what you've done.
Okay. So the parking information that we've given, we need to expand on that? Is that what you're saying?
Solidify with Speedy. And frankly, I, I get as much from him as you can. And I know it's business and all that stuff. I get that.
I was just waiting to have the lease drawn up. I could have had it.
I get it. I get it.
I could have had it drawn up.
And then I'd also suggest you come in and meet Andy and the fire marshal and see if you can work about getting that occupancy number to something you can live with, which will then lead to the determination of how many spots do you need.
What was the first part of it? To meet with the fire marshal?
Meet with the fire marshal and Andy.
Okay.
And then, let's say you decide, okay, we want to limit that occupancy to, to 70, whatever. Take that 70, that translates into how many spots by code do you need? Then you come back here and say, okay, we need 110 spots, but we got an agreement with Speedy, and we got these other ones, and we came up with some other, and, you know, we need a variance of 20 spots. Then we can decide whether we feel comfortable granting you that variance. So you guys have some homework to do.
I'd like to add, too, that the planning board did have specified, they wanted some additional information relating to the site features, such as cross-access lighting details.
Yeah.
Also missing is accessible parking spots. They're gonna need two. So that's gonna reduce...
Handicapped spots?
Right.
Yeah.
And then how are you getting from, because that is, I'm looking at, like, to get from Speedy's parking lot to this parking lot?
Yeah. There's a drainage...
Now I need, now I need my, my boots.
Yeah. There's a, see the length, there's supposed to be rocks. I don't know what that, on the site plan. There's a huge length of, of a drainage area. So we can't just, like, cross over midway...
Yeah. So how am I getting from that parking spot?
Sidewalk. It's actually, it's, it's right there. If you were on the property, if you were there, you'd see that it's visually...
Yeah.
An easy thing to do.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a sidewalk.
But people take the shortest route.
I'm looking at it. I, I see it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's very open and, and very, you know, accessible.
Yeah. So there's a sidewalk that runs from the parking lot. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
But people will cut across.
That's right. I'm looking at it.
Thank you for pulling it up, because... I will 100% cut across.
One of the comments, one of the comments of the planning board was, they, they were discussing the use of the sidewalk or possibly a different...
Little bridge or something.
Some type of access from the parking area, other than going out to the sidewalk.
And that's why I just go back to, as you're talking through Speedy, I understand that this is the, the back just seems to be...
Right. Yeah. If we were utilizing that back parking lot, that would be definitely the way to go.
But if he's not willing to give that, I understand. It just...
Yeah, I, I'll, we'll talk to Dave.
This might be a great opportunity to bring these things up to him. I mean, I mean, you basically go to him and say, hey, the board's want, wants us to have 123 parking spots. How, how can you help us?
I know. I already told him I didn't want to make my problems his problems, though, so. But we'll, we'll push him a little bit.
All right. So I, do you have a pretty good understanding of your homework assignments here? If you don't, call Andy. Watch this again.
Find the fire marshal and talk to him.
Yeah.
And, and I would like to reiterate, reiterate my concern with the permanency of this.
Yes.
And...
The permits?
The, the permanency of the parking situation.
Okay.
And a one-year lease, I, I would have concerns with still, if it would just be a one...
So let's, let me expand on that a little bit, because that's a very good point. You guys, you should have your eyes wide open. Let's say you come in and you have an agreement with Speedy for 18 spots for one year. And we approve a variance and a permit, and the planning board does what it does in terms of approval, all based upon that lease staying in existence. Or you having parking spots from somewhere else, meeting that number. And that, that goes. And now you're looking at being shut down, because you don't, you no longer have the parking spots that are required.
Yeah, yeah.
Under the approval. That's why Matt's like, you know, get a five, 10, 50-year lease, or best scenario, buy that lot to the north.
Initially, he said five, when we casually talked about it.
And, and we get that, there's economics involved. We understand that.
Hey, I had a conversation with Dave outside of Nick, and we discussed purchasing the blacktop parking lot behind the building. When I brought it up, he said, you know, he'll sell it if he can subdivide it. But he wants to see the addition go up before and, and take things one step at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
Chicken and the egg.
Well...
But your parking agreement could maybe work into that. You know, you get a five-year agreement that says XYZ that may turn into a purchase offer and...
Well, that's true, too.
Write a first refusal.
Right.
Options by.
You gotta talk to an attorney.
He was gonna look into whether he could legally subdivide it. Is that the right term? Yeah, he was gonna legally, but he...
Tell him to call Andy.
That's right. Well, he, he says, let's do this first. He's kind of like, you know, trying to oversee us, what we're doing, which we didn't mind, you know. He's, he's definitely contributing some good advice, but...
All right. But again, you have a good grasp on what we're asking you to do. And all right. Any, any questions, feel free to call Andy, and we'll, we, I'll reiterate, we want to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to table.
You folks taking the time. Yeah.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion to table for the reasons discussed. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
By the way, just looking at our agenda for next month, make sure you call somebody, because we might be starting early. We have a, we have a, and you guys will go first, right? It's gonna be the, so you will be first. But like, tonight, we started at 6:00. We may start earlier.
When, when would the next?
One month from now, whatever.
May 18th.
Thursday of the month.
Okay.
May 18th.
Okay.
I don't know your next planning board meeting, but yeah.
Does it make sense, I mean, for us to have a letter for a planning board saying, our, you know, our concern is the parking and really nothing else? Or is that...
Yeah, I think that's a fair to say.
Everybody comfortable with the memo that says that?
That our only issue is this parking and the other, the other things we're, look favorably upon.
Yeah. If that helps them along a little bit. Sometimes they need help.
Okay. We'll see if we can embellish the, the parking lot situation, definitely.
Great.
Good luck.
All right. See you next month, folks.
Thanks.
Do you want to do seeker on it, or no?
No, we'll hold off until...
Thank you, though.
Take care. Did we vote?
All those in favor of table?
Aye, aye. We did.
Did we? I don't remember if we did.
Well, she had written it down, whether or not. All right.
We did now.
Last but not least, depending who you ask, maybe.
Anthony Simone, Tuscan Wood Fired Pizza, 17 Thomas Maria Circle, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant at 1998 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Empire Park Management LLC and is owned limited business. SPL number 093.02-1-12.002. This is application number 23Z-0020.
Hello, my name's Anthony Simone, 17 Thomas Maria Circle. This is deja vu for me.
Well, we haven't seen you in a while, though, but that's okay.
A lot more high-tech.
Yeah, yeah. Lot less hair and a lot less dark hair.
Greater hair.
Well, all right. So Tony, you're gonna, I guess, move your pizzeria operation to this location. You've given us details about the hours and such. Honestly, the only issue that I... issue that I want to clarify for tonight, and you've done it, I think, with some of your emails and photos, but if we could, is where the trucks are going to be parked. Your landlord, I saw, is okay with it as long as you do this or do that and the other thing, so I just would like to focus on that, the other operational issues.
The bumper of the truck won't exceed the curb
Yeah.
On the building.
Andy, can we pull, he looks like he's trying.
Working on it.
Yeah.
We got a lot of pictures, I'm not sure which ones you want to see first, but
Best one.
That one there.
Okay.
Everybody know, like, know where we are, looking, I guess, toward the drive-throughs if we were to
Yep.
I'm going to take some of those panels down on the fence.
Okay.
And the bumper of the truck won't pass the curb there. The parking spot is 20 foot long.
Really? Okay.
So
All right, and I don't know that I've ever seen any cars parked there, I suppose I have, but I don't know. But again, your landlord is, submitted a letter, an agreement or a copy of it, whatever, and
Besides, I mean, there's no issues with the town in terms of parking a business truck there at a business location, right? There's not, I mean
No, I talked to the planning department, engineering, to see if they had any concerns. The, I just want to make sure that the biggest concern with the previous approval was the traffic flow there with the drive-through and the pickup and as long as that's being maintained, no real concern.
And tell me a little bit about when the trucks are going to be used, are they going to be moving around a lot during the day or is it a night thing, a weekend thing?
They'll go out for lunch and mostly at night for parties and festivals.
All right, and you have to load them up and stuff like that, I imagine, are they going to be in those spots when you load them up?
Yeah.
And you're not, you're not going to be utilizing them for sale, that's just going to, you're parking there, right?
They're mobile. So it sounds like the busy time for a drive-through in the lot is when he's not there with his trucks.
Right, yep.
More, more often than not because you're leaving before lunch and you're getting back after, you know, like in terms of meal times, you're not there.
Yeah, I'd imagine the loading would be the same thing, would be before those hide times if he needs to get them out on the road prior to that.
There's a door on the side of the building and I could cart everything behind the truck, so it's not going to impede the driveway there.
Perfect.
Great. All right, any other questions from the board?
No.
I don't see any call-ins or emails, so I'll proceed with the, there's nobody else in here asked to come up and speak, so I'll make a motion under seeker to declare it type two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to approve the application. I think it'll be, I've had the product before and hopefully that will lead to good success at that location. I'll, I'll be honest, I kind of struggle sometimes wondering why the other businesses didn't succeed, I thought they had a pretty good product, too, and, you know, I love pizza as you can all tell, so, good luck, well, we got to vote, I guess, but I'm going to make
They usually follow my lead. I will, I will second the motion and second that Dan likes pizza.
He's thinking too much of pizza.
That'll go in the record, yeah, but, all right, so we have a motion to approve in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Second vote, all those in favor of pizza.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think that was it, right, for applications?
That's it.
So we will stand adjourned for the night, see you next month. Good luck, Tony.
Take care. Good luck.